We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. The Telsi City Common Council's today's date is November the first, 2021. If you could, please stand with me and recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. He may be seated. I do not have any additions or changes to the agenda, so if there are none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. We have a motion made by Julie. Do you hear a second? Second by Gary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda stands approved. Just for point of clarity, everybody, Philip Simpson is participating in this meeting according to our ordinance that we adopted. And he is, obviously, you have to be seen and heard, and he is in by Zoom, so he is being seen there and heard as well, so.
I do have a quick question about that, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
It was my understanding that you had to be physically present at the meeting in order to vote on budgets. Is that correct?
On budgets, that would be correct, yes.
Okay. Does that apply to the Telsi Electric Department budget?
We're actually, we're not actually voting, I'm sorry. It's going to be presented tonight, and we're actually going to get the official voting on it at the next meeting through ordinance, so yeah, we'll be okay. Alright, so I just want to clarify that, so we'll move on. Presentation of minutes for approval. You should have two sets of minutes for your consideration for approval, your October fourth, your regular meeting, as well as the Common Council's special meeting on October the eleventh, and that's where we basically, we adopt our budgets and so forth. And if there are no changes or corrections to those minutes, I entertain a motion to approve those minutes as presented.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion made by Gary. Do you hear a second? Second by Julie. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes stand approved. Next item on the agenda is the comments of citizens. At this time, if there are any citizens that wish to make a comment, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the minutes, please. You are on the agenda, sir. You would be later under the new business. You're good. Alright, you're welcome. Hearing no comments, we'll move on to committee and ward reports. We'll start with Ward one, Larry Kleen.
Just a few comments and a couple of questions. One comment is, I appreciate the paving that is going on. Hopefully they'll get all those streets paved before bad weather sets in.
You should have it done this week. Should.
It's good to see that. I had made a comment at the Board of Public Works meeting, I can't recall when, but a few weeks ago, about the intersection of Petzlotsi slash Twenty-Fourth Street and Boundary Way and Burgland Hills Drive.
Is that where the curb is, Larry?
That's where the curb is, and I personally think it should be a three-way stop at that intersection. I didn't know if anything had been done on that or not, or...
I can, I don't, I can't answer all, but I can answer part of your question. So there was some overgrowth of vegetation, and I know Pat is, I don't know if he's got that cleared back or not to help with visibility.
It helps. It did help, but it doesn't solve the problem if you're coming down Boundary Way. Before you get to the intersection, you're supposed to yield to cars that are coming down Twenty-Fourth Street, and you really can't see cars coming down Twenty-Fourth Street until you get out in the curb.
Sure.
I mean, it's...
I'll make, I'll make just one comment on that. Jeff, you're gonna have to actually look into this with Chris Goffin, because part of that Twenty-Fourth Street is county.
It is.
And then the Boundary Way part of it, in Burgland Hills Drive there, is Telsi, so it's kind of like Telsi and the county T there. I'm not sure who adopts that one, so we're gonna have to, he's gonna have to get some, look into that.
We have to see where the inventory of the streets ends for city versus county.
I mean, I know where ours ends there.
I know it's, it's very weird.
Like, one stop sign would be ours and two would be theirs, I think, but I don't know how that works. That's probably the most complicated one to understand that I could wrap my head around right now, but I know what you're saying. I understand.
I can, I can talk with Chris. We can figure that out.
Will you, will you dig, and when you do, will you email myself as well as the council, make sure Larry gets it too? He's, he's counsel.
I will try to remember that, and if I don't, Larry, then shoot me a text message or something, and I'll ask him about it.
He'll remind you. Well, you know, Petzlotsi turns occurs on what would be Twenty-Fourth Street.
Would be Twenty-Fourth.
And that's when it hits outside city limits, and it picks back up again when it hits that T spot where he's kind of talking as it goes into Burgland Hills, but yet Boundary Way, there's like three or four houses out there that's in city limits. That's totally complicated right there.
So you leave the city, come back.
And get a long Twenty-Fourth there, that's the field that's just north of Twenty-Fourth is outside the city limits. It's definitely an odd little checkerboard.
A moment you're in two places at once.
It's a, it's a busy intersection, especially in the morning and in the evenings, and there's a bus route, there's a bus stop on Boundary Way there. Awesome. So, anyway, I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The last thing is, and I got my homeowner's insurance renewals, so this is proper question. The fire classification, I was told by my insurance company that we're in a, it's fire rating six, and I was told that that's for the whole city. They don't distinguish by neighborhoods. Six is a relatively low classification. They told me that, I mean, it goes in reverse. I mean, ten's the worst that you can have, one is the best. And six falls in the latter part, and I was told that Chrisney has a fire classification of five. Does anybody know why we're in a six and what can be done to improve our fire classification?
Well, we got, we're luckily, we have Chief Lenny still here. He might be able to answer that far better than anybody I know.
Absolutely.
When I first took over, we were in a seven. We moved to a six back in mid-two thousands, I believe. Last time they rated us, they changed the classification schedule and added a whole bunch of stuff to it. At that time, the water system was a large part of it. I think it's one-third of it is actually based on the water system. Hydrant testing was more than that they have, which has been done since, since they've color-coded the hybrids and some of those things that's been done since. We were lacking back then on our ladder truck size. We had fifty-five foot, and this has got the hundred-foot truck. Those are two things that next time they rate us, that probably is gonna help, and we'll probably do for that within the next year or two. They usually contact us when they're ready to re-rate, so with the improvements of all that, plus the new truck and the ladder truck, I would see where I would went to a five or maybe even a four.
Is there any way that we can request a re-rating?
We can ask them. They usually just kind of work on their, their own skin. They, last time, they were two years into this before we were in that, so.
Alright, good question, Larry.
Thank you. Okay. Well, it not only affects me, it affects a lot of cities, and, and if you haven't received your homeowner's renewal, it's going to go substantially because of other factors, but fire classification obviously has an impact on that also, so. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next up, we have Julie Conert, Ward two.
So for beautification, at kind of the last minute, they decided to go ahead and have a chili cook-off and also the pie contest. And it's actually this Saturday, November sixth, from two to five. There will be, I think Betty's at Dance Haven and a cheer group. They're supposed to be performing. She's got a couple things lined up. So if you know anyone that would like, any groups, businesses, or individuals that would want to participate, they can just hit hold Betty at the depot. She's at the, she's there. Betty does this Saturday, so very quickly. Christmas in the Park will be December fourth. It'll be run pretty much like it was before. Everything will be outside, September fourth, on Saturday from two to four. Greg will be right afterwards at four o'clock. The only other meeting, there was an LEPC meeting last Monday, the twenty-fifth. There's really nothing to report, but thank you to Gary for attending that short meeting for me.
Just to touch base on the chili cook-off, Betty at this time has only two, I think, and one pie.
This morning? Oh, she initially told me two and two.
Maybe it was tough, I'm sure, but, and she's adding to the Christmas in the Park live reindeer. So, other than hotter, I've never seen a live reindeer, and I was a kid, so it'll be interesting to see how that goes.
She's already had the live reindeer for a while, and it's always been booked.
Yeah.
And so, kind of expensive, but she was able to get that this year.
She was, so. Alright, next up, we'll go to Philip Simpson. We have Ward three.
Uh, no report.
Okay, alright, thank you, Philip. We'll go ahead to Ward four, Gary Morton.
Okay, got a couple things here. Solid Waste, our director that we've had there for a few years, I can't tell you back to how many. Mr. Ken Smith is retiring as of December thirty-first, so we are in the process of accepting applications for that position. And there's a, is that job description on, on their website, Chris?
No, we have a committee working on getting that job description together, so myself, Greg Jarboe, I think Mayor Terry, and Cindy Taylor is working on that, and I think another lady actually, I don't even remember her name, but yeah.
Again, always looking for a new director there. Also, the advisory committee there is being reorganized. It's solid waste. The previous members of that resigned a few months ago, so that committee, I think we've got some, what, four or five possibly?
I think five, and one of Charlie Ballmeister is resigned from the advisory group, just recently, I found out.
So that, that, that committee is being reorganized as well. As far as prices, again, that's a major fundraiser for the solid waste. Commodity prices are tending to rise, and some are kind of staying stable, but some are rising, and the major factor there is that the United States companies are buying more of that now. While China was our savior, they were buying up and up. All the stuff that we had out there, they, they backed off, and so American companies and the recycling business are picking up the, the cycle and buying more now. A new employee at the office there, if you call out there, a lady who'd worked there before, can't come up with her name offhand for many years, Chris Wheeler, is the new secretary there, working in the office with Ken. Take back drug, as the police chief mentioned at the Board of Works meeting. Then the last Saturday, I think, was the last one for this year, would have been two during the year, and again, those drugs have been combined with what the police department, you know, takes in regularly. I think people can drop off those drugs there. And like over three hundred pounds of drugs have been turned over, and, and those, I think, are disposed of, what, the Eversol?
I'm not sure where they're taken. Dropped off at Heaven's Field.
And they burn them or take care of them or something.
I dispose of them.
Okay, let's see what else. Julie mentioned the cook-off there. At beautification this Saturday, and I believe that's what I have.
Gary, you gonna have your famous chili there this Saturday?
Well, they, they'd rather I wouldn't bring it because I won first prize like three, four years in a row. You know, it kind of hurts the competition.
Verna will bring hers then.
And they know that I'm gonna get that blue ribbon every time, so.
Verna, Verna will bring hers then, or the pie, pie contest, one of the two.
Maybe both.
There you go. Alright. He's always easy to bring out, cooking and stuff, so. Alright, thank you, Gary. Next, we have John Little, Councilman at Large.
Last week, we tried to run a camera in the sewer system down between twelve and Thirteenth Street from Payne toward the high school. We did have a lot of complaints in that area about basements flooding and everything. They came in and the equipment broke down before they could get started, so they are supposed to be back there this Thursday at seven o'clock to try to run that camera through the sewer system, try to figure out what's going on in that area, so hopefully that goes. Also, the other thing I got is Brick by Brick Committee has a meeting tomorrow night from five-thirty to six-thirty at the forehouse. If you're not interested, so that's all I have.
Alright, thank you, John. And do we have any comments or statements from the city attorney or our clerk treasurer?
Nothing.
Alright, we'll go ahead and move on now to old business. First item on old business is Kennelton wastewater litigation discussion. I just kept this on it because at our last meeting, we said we keep it on. The city attorney, myself, and Superintendent Chris Toothman at the Wastewater Department, have been circulating internally a letter to issue to Kennelton regarding some of the comments that the council had made, and so I believe it is finally done at this point, so it goes out tomorrow, taking in all the considerations that the council discussed, so we'll have that officially done tomorrow. Any questions on the council regarding the Kennelton sewer wastewater litigation? Alright. Yeah, we'll send it to you all too.
I'll give you a copy when it goes out.
I didn't want to send it out yet because it wasn't officially done, but I feel like it's perfect, honestly, I would say.
I picked, picked up a letterhead from the mayor before the meeting, so I can send it out tomorrow.
But I feel it's definitely where it needs to be, and it takes all the comments that we all put in there, and I even added a few things just to protect us in the matter if something changes, so we're, we're in good shape, I think. Alright, we'll go ahead and move on under old business now. Item B, lease documents, sports complex, and senior center. I'm gonna let the city attorney, he has something here to read on that.
I've, I've got, first of all, this morning I had a meeting with the Telsi Building Corporation, at which time they approved. I took the necessary steps to move forward. We've adopted meeting minutes reflecting the various resolutions that they have adopted and approved. We have signed off on the preliminary trust indenture document. Spent the day reading that a second time. I will, I will not argue with that other than to say that, man, that's some dry reading. So what we have tonight are documents that our bond counsel, Ice Miller, have provided to us, that provide excerpts of meeting minutes for tonight's meeting. What we are going to do is go through these meeting minutes and ideally adopt an ordinance to move forward with the bond matters, and so at this point, I apologize, what we need to do is take the preliminary steps to adopt an ordinance, which I believe would involve a motion to, for a first reading of the ordinance, and then we will consider suspension of the rules and adoption of the ordinance after the first reading. That's the point we're at. This would be an ordinance approving matters related to financing the project and ratifying and approving distribution of a preliminary official statement. That preliminary official statement would go to the ratings agencies. Bond counsel will handle that. There will be a ratings call and discussion with that after this, adoption of this ordinance.
With the S and P, so I've done it before, so I'm getting ready to be... Fourteenth, December, January? Yeah, something like that. We have a pre-one, the tenth, so.
I did not bring our tentative schedule with me, so I can't tell you with any certainty.
I'd done that before, well, Connie and I had done it before for the water bonds, and we'd done those last year, or this year. If there are no questions, no council, we did distribute a copy of the ordinance out prior to the meeting today, and my apologies if you didn't get it any sooner, but hopefully you all did have a chance to review it. If there are no questions, I want to entertain a motion to allow Jeff to read the ordinance. Eleven, was it eleven, ordinance number eleven eighty? Ordinance number eleven eighty, sorry.
We'll make the motion.
We have a motion made by Gary. Do you hear a second? Seconded by John. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Go ahead and first reading of ordinance eleven eighty.
Yes, ordinance number eleven eighty, an ordinance of the city of Telsi approving matters related to the financing of the project and ratifying and approving distribution of a preliminary official statement. Whereas the city of Telsi has determined to acquire certain real property, the proceeds of which will be used to construct a sports complex and senior center improvements, and to the extent funds remain, construction on city hall project renovations and other capital improvements, together with all necessary appurtenances, related improvements, and equipment collectively the project. Whereas the city has entered into a lease agreement dated October fourth, 2021, with the Telsi Building Corporation. Whereas the corporation is considering a resolution approving the issuance and sale of its ad valorem property tax lease rental bonds of 2021 in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $2 million to finance the project, and a copy of the resolution is incorporated herein by reference. Whereas the city and the corporation have obtained all necessary approvals required by law for the issuance of the bonds and the execution of the herein after defined lease, and whereas a substantially final form of continuing disclosure undertaking certificate was presented to the council for approval. Now therefore, being ordained by the city of Telsi, Indiana, that the corporation will use bond proceeds to acquire the project. The board hereby approves the sale of the bonds in accordance with the terms of the resolution of the corporation to be considered for adoption on November first, 2021, approving the sale of bonds. The city agrees to cooperate with the corporation and assist it in fulfilling the requirements of all agencies of the federal, state, and city governments. Upon the redemption or retirement of bonds issued by the corporation, the city will accept from the corporation title to the project, free and clear of any and all liens and encumbrances thereon. The board hereby approves the form of continuing disclosure undertaking certificate attached here too and incorporated herein, and authorizes the board and the auditors to execute such certificate. The board hereby ratifies the actions of the corporation, deeming the preliminary official statement relating to the bonds as nearly final, and hereby ratifies and approves the execution of the preliminary official statement by the mayor and the clerk treasurer. The mayor and clerk treasurer are authorized to endorse their approval of the final official statement on behalf of the city, with such changes as they shall approve, such approval to be conclusively evidenced by their signature on the final official statement. The mayor and the clerk treasurer are hereby authorized on behalf of the city to approve and execute any and all certificates and documents necessary in connection with the issuance of the bonds of the corporation, passed and adopted by the common council of the city of Telsi, Indiana, this first day of November, 2021.
Okay. Council, you've had the first reading, the ordinance number eleven eighty in its entirety. Are you entertain a motion to suspend the rules for the second, third reading by Todd O'Leary?
Motion to suspend?
Okay. We have a motion made by Philip to suspend the rules. Larry had a question real quick, Philip, so just hold on.
I've got a couple of questions.
Okay, he's got, he's got a couple of questions. Sure?
Who, who decides how the funds are spent that are generated through the funding budget?
Yeah.
This council does.
There you go. Basically, it will be this council.
Decided by the building corporation?
It is not decided by the building corporation.
The second question, and we've covered this in the past, and I just want to make sure I'm a bit better understanding, but in the section where it says, "The proceeds will be used to construct a sports complex and senior center improvements, and to the extent funds remain, construction, city hall renovations, and other capital improvements, together with all necessary appurtenances and related improvements and equipment collectively the project." My question is, where it says, "To the extent funds remain after the construction of a sports complex and senior center," that implies that that has to be done first before any funds can be spent on anything else.
Pretty much.
So, that is the, that is the intent. Obviously, the hope is always that there would be funds left over, but the intent is that it be to fund the complex and the senior center. And then, but you're right, your reading would be, as it's, as it is stated in this document, that those funds would be used for those two purposes first. Now, I cannot tell you conclusively that our hands would be tied on that. I'd have to discuss that with Ice Miller to see if, if there'd be any latitude, if circumstances changed, if, you know. I think, I think the change in circumstances that would come up, though, would be more likely to be a situation where we turn out to not need as much money for the senior center or for the sports complex, and then funds are left over, so I'd, I'd, I'd leave it up to you all to determine if, if either of those projects would ever be passed over in favor of other projects.
When we talked about this before, I thought there would be funds available for use in our other parks because all of this stuff combined is the project.
Correct. For definition purpose, though, all is the project.
Well, for, if, if, what you're saying, though, that the sports complex and the senior center have to be done first before any funds can be spent on anything else, then there won't be any funds left over, because I've seen projections of $7 million for the sports complex, and this bond is, what, $2 million?
1.7.
1.7? That was...
Okay. Karen, I, I'm hoping that there's some money from this COVID money. We've got eight hundred thousand that none has been spent. That's some of the COVID relief money right there. I'm hoping there should be some money possibly there for some park. Because I'm, I'm, we might think we need to evaluate our parks and determine some, I know I got there a Shinger Park at his castle that was built like twenty years ago or so on leadership, Perry County. I worked on that. And I think some of the appliances are old and are used, or some aren't working, or some could be replaced. I'd like to see some really evaluation of our parks and replace the equipment that is not in working shape, and so I'm hoping, I mean, John's on that committee, I haven't made any firm decisions in the pay notes spending that money, but I'm hoping that that would be a great, a great source for that money.
Gary, I'm hoping there's that flexibility in those funds, but from what I've read, that flexibility doesn't exist. I, I don't, I think those American rescue funds are more restrictive. It would not allow us to spend money on our parks, but that's just my interpretation of regulations.
Well, there's been some debate on that, and I've read it through the city in Iowa, I think, or Nebraska, to build a brand-new football field, also, a surf football field with money from that fund, so there's gotta be some variations in what you can spend the money for. And I'm not sure we know exactly versus that, but yeah, I do think our parks are good sources of monies if we come up with those money.
I'm just really disappointed that we cannot use these funds to update some of our existing parks and...
Well, keep in mind, we did make a, keep in mind, we did make a change to our budget after, you know, we put seventy thousand. We never had that before. That's seventy thousand if the council chooses that they can do every year now, if they, if they so choose to. I think it'd be appropriate for something else, but I mean, that's before, they barely had twenty, so I mean, we've, we've increased our money that we're gonna put into our parks each year, along with the full-time parks and direct director, which I feel will make those improvements that you need, that they need. I agree, Larry, these parks need it, but we could either budget more for the complex through our general fund or budget it through this bond. You're gonna get more through your general fund if it continues. Your bonds will be your one-time shot, that money's gone. You're gonna see a continuing every year of seventy thousand, so you're gonna have a hundred and forty thousand next year. You're gonna have two hundred and ten thousand in three years, that you're putting into your parks, where we can take two, ten this year, and just go through it, but you see what I'm saying? I'm trying to, we're budgeting more for our parks in another way.
And I, I do want to backtrack a little bit on what I said, because I, I think you were right preliminarily, that, that all of the, all that is described in there is the project, so I don't think the city's hands would absolutely be tied to prioritizing. I think that's just a, within parentheses, referencing an intent, but not necessarily a requirement. Does that make sense?
Makes sense, and that's what you told me the first time, but that's not what you said, man.
I apologize for that, Larry. I, I think, I think after I read it again, I think the project, though, is collectively the project, so I think this council will completely be responsible for determining where those funds are gonna be spent.
But just to be clear, I mean, I do think we need to improve all of our parks, not just this one aggregate park. They all do need work, and that's why the full-time director and budgeting more funds towards it, and sidewalk improvement, which would lead you to parks, all ties in as one big package, I hope. That's my intention and my vision. I hope, I don't know if it's the council's entire vision, but... We do have a motion on the floor made by Philip. Two motions.
I will say, I think the parks are in good shape right now. I think they could be even better. But I've been to pretty much all the parks in the past few weeks, and they look great.
Okay.
Philip, have you walked across the bridge out of, uh, Thomas Park?
No.
Pardon me?
No.
Okay. The last time I saw it was, it was taped off with caution tape. The last time I saw it was taped off with caution tape, and it wasn't available for use. Is that correct?
Yes. We just taped it off three weeks ago. You brought up a comment in email, so we, safety, but we've invested, how much in Quonass Park? 70,000?
Oh, anyhow.
70 to 100,000 dollars already.
That bridge is used by, potentially by quite a few people that live in the public housing on 16th Street to get down to the soccer field, and by people that live in Spring Hill Apartments to get over the elevator, rather than walking on 19th Street where there are no sidewalks.
Right. But I think it's better to close it off and let anybody get hurt on it, too.
I agree with that, Mayor, but it proves my point. We need to spend some money on improving our parks. And that bridge is part of our park system.
Well, the point is too, you know, 100,000 dollars, we're trying, Larry, we are. I know everybody could agree or disagree where it should be spent, a dugout or a bridge, but we're, you know, what good is a bridge if there's no park to go to?
I understand.
So that's where, you know, chicken or egg, so we'll get there.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah. So and then, you know, if you go to the sports complex improvements, we'll create an ADA compliant, which right now, if you go down to the ballpark now, down there, ADA is a zero. I mean, so we're all trying, so. Anyway, so we had a motion made by Phillip. Julie, I hear you second it, for a motion to suspend the rules for second, third reading by Todd Olmeyer. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You may read the second and third reading by Todd Olmeyer.
Thank you, sir. Ordinance number 1180, an ordinance of the city of Tell City approving matters related to the financing of the project and ratifying and approving distribution of a preliminary official statement. Ordinance number 1180, an ordinance of the city of Tell City approving matters relating to the financing of the project and ratifying and approving distribution of a preliminary official statement.
Okay. Council, you've had the first, second, third reading, ordinance number 1180. Any further discussion before we vote? Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt then, ordinance number 1180.
I'm looking to motion.
The motion made by Larry, or excuse me, Gary, you're here second. Second by Julie. Any further discussion? Any none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you all for that. Next item on the agenda, under new business, we have Mr. Jimmy Carter. He has a proposal on animal control. Jim, if you could come up, state your name, address for the minutes, or I know your name, but state your address for the minutes, if you could, please. And the floor is yours.
Thank you for putting me on the bench, and I was a little late because I was at the commissioners' meeting. They just passed those proposals. And my name's James, official name is James Carter. I live at 6710 Abbott Road, Tell City, Indiana, 47586. And I'm presently the vice president of the Humane Society, but this is not why I'm here, and I do not have the authority to state that I'm speaking.
I don't know if they can hear you very well, Jim, I'm sorry. I can't hear you either.
That needs to be turned off or something.
Let me make sure it's on.
How's that? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, it's much better.
Okay. My wife says I have to speak up all the time, but I've been to meetings in Evansville all day, and I'm pretty much pooped, so excuse me if I go to sleep here. The reason I'm here is basically, I just want to explain to you that for the last three years, I've been working on a plan and a proposal to give to the county, and I've actually been putting it off, because as you know, in the last two years, we have not had a shelter. And in reality, we actually haven't had a shelter for close to three years, because the last year the shelter was officially open, they effectively weren't acting as a shelter completely. So anyway, I went through that situation and started putting a plan together, and I realized that certain things need to be done in order for the plan to work. So in order for that to work, I seen where we're going to have to make the animal control more efficient, more safe, less cost, and other things that would be involved, more secure. And so I devised a plan, and I've actually approached the sheriff department and the Tell City Police Department, and briefly outlined the plan. And I'm going to give this plan basically, basically, it's in flux, by the way. On November 16th, at the commissioner's office, I'm going to offer that plan. As you know, they just now, actually as of half an hour ago, they approved two parts, what I call stage one, which is introduced by Greg Jarboe. So he's been very helpful in starting to actually move on the shelter and the animal control. Basically, what the new agreement was, we have, this is a temporary agreement, and they made an agreement with Harrison County to provide animal control on a basis where they would come to get animals from the shelter, but they had no place proper on the outside or the inside that was closed. So I've been working with Greg for well over three months, I can say close to three months, to get a proper, secure roof on the shelter, because they didn't have that. So that if Harrison County came, they had, we had a place to actually put any kind of an animal that bit, or an animal that was roaming, that was a nuisance or whatever, and temporarily into these kennels. There's five kennels on the outside, and I recognize it needed to be tremendously improved. And thanks to Greg, he got that done, and they actually improved that. In fact, the, on item six, the first one is this animal control standard operating procedure, and that's, they approved that, and basically now they're working, they're going to be working with dispatch. So now, instead of them having no, as of actually until a week ago, Friday, there was no animal control procedure in Perry County. There was none. Dispatch had none, sheriffs had none. They had what they call a working relationship, but there was no procedure. So finally, stage one, which is temporary, is a procedure on how to operate with the animal control officer from Harrison County and what to do with them. And they're working with the animal control board with Herbie Landers on this. So that part, stage one, is done. Second part they approved tonight was the animal control run modification, which basically is the cost. They approved $7,500 to put this roof, proper roof and secure system for the outside kennels. So that's the beginning of what I call, it's a temporary fix, but it's something that nobody else, you know, did. So I said, I give Greg Jarboe accolades for that. But what I'm here for is to let you know that I want to offer a permanent fix. And again, I want to offer you a plan, and I want to include Tell City, Cannleton and Troy in this plan. In other words, I wanted to discuss that. In fact, I would like to discuss it with the mayor personally, probably in the second week of November, to actually have a system where you actually have an animal control officer and a shelter, both operating at half the cost that was offered before. In other words, it'd be more economically feasible, and the system would be more secure, it would be more safe, and less liability. We have a very large liability right now. There is an argument with between myself and the animal control board, and I ain't going to say it was an argument, disagreement, where the animal control board wanted the health department to go inspect a premise or a private property where there was an animal that bit. In other words, if a dog bit somebody, the animal control board actually was trying to get the health department, which Kim Robertson, to go inspect to see if this was, if that would make, if it would come under the qualifications under the animal control ordinance. And she didn't have that expertise. She's got her hands full right now with COVID, and she shouldn't even be doing that. The health department's position with animal bites is to be, if a person bites, gets bit, then they're to report that to the health department. There, and the health department reports that, and then makes a report to the state. There's state forms for that. So that's basically in that function, that's their job. But Herbie Landers went to the commissioners and asked to have that wording on the animal control ordinance changed so that the health department could do that. And I'm very much against that, and the reason for is that they're not properly trained. I don't, do any here know what NACA is? Does anybody here understand what NACA? Well, NACA is the National Animal Control Association. We do have somebody. Greg, what?
You already told him, he cheated.
Glad you're here, Greg, because if I say something wrong, he could get on top of me on this. But anyway, we don't have anybody that's working actually that's NACA, that has went through NACA training. In other words, NACA is the national standard for animal control officers, okay? For handlers, okay? And we don't have anybody in this county that's now here that's certified. And that's very important, because that's also a liability thing. So what I'm going to be offering on November 16th is a plan to open up the shelter, inside shelter, and have an animal control officer here. Not from Harrison County, and there's, I think that's, again, a great idea, now I've been watched by Greg here. But I want an operation so that everybody is online, everybody wants, everybody knows what they're supposed to do, and everybody is working together, as opposed to right now, we have people, I get calls, by the way, I get calls from the dispatch sometimes, or did. No telling, dispatch wasn't sure who they were supposed to call. So what do you do when there's really no procedure, proper procedure? Now, that's, that is being taken care of now, and again, thanks to Greg. Were you here the whole time, Greg?
No, I stuck you on it.
Okay.
It was a team, it wasn't just me, it was a bunch of people.
Okay. There, yes, there was a group, the group, they got together, they made a procedure, and that's going to, that's going to work fine for a temporary, I don't know how long or how effective it's going to be, we'll know in the next month. But what I want to offer is a way to open up the shelter, complete shelter, with people inside the shelter, and a animal control officer in Tell City at less cost than it was offered before, okay? And that's what I'm going to offer on the 16th. So I'm basically inviting anybody that wants to hear the offer to come to the commissioners' meeting, because Tell City is very much vital in this. When we go back to our records, Tell City is obviously, by percentage wise, has the highest number of animal calls. And they, you know, work diligently, and the officers have worked diligently to do with what tools they have. They don't have the proper tools. So what I just want to do is let you know that I think this plan will offer higher security, cheaper, less cost, higher safety, and higher efficiency. But I need people to listen to the plan, and I've been working on it for a long time. But again, we have a temporary solution, and thanks to the commissioners passing this, at least it'll work right now. And we don't know until we start working with it. Right now, if there's an animal bite, the procedure is, correct me if I'm wrong, the procedure is that dispatch is notified, then dispatch goes through a procedure of who to call, if it's Tell City, our county, or Troy. And then that, and then they work through the animal control officer, and they take the animal to the outside kennel when it's finished, when it's secure. And then that's notified, the animal control board then is notified, and then they go through a procedure of so many days of keeping that animal until that Harrison County animal control officer arrives and takes the animal.
All quarantined animals, animals that are deemed to be, have to be quarantined outside of the home, that actually will be taken to Harrison County immediately.
Okay. And of course, I wasn't on that meeting, but I got the basic gist of it. But what I want to do is to make sure it's actually taken care of. The long-term solution is we have an animal control officer here, an operating shelter here, at less cost than was offered before, okay? Because there was only one actual offer, okay? And we had negotiations with, it takes the village, and it fell through. But I think it was April, Herbie went to the commissioners, and he says, "I've extended everything I can do, is there anybody here that can come up with a plan or anything?" So I did. And nobody else has. So I'd really like the public to hear it, hear me out on it. It's, like I said, as Eric said, Dick said, I'm working outside the box, but I think if you hear it, you might be interested in it. Because like I said, the big thing for the cities and the counties, it's going to be less cost. And we're going to have two things going that we don't have now. So anybody got any questions right now? Yes?
You said that Commissioner B is on the 16th?
I think 16th, yes.
What time do they meet?
That'll be the morning meeting at 8:00.
8:00?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Okay.
We were 16th at 8:00.
8:00. And like I said before, this plan, this plan is in flux, because I'm in the process of meeting and sending letters out to different entities that would be involved with this. And it's going to take me a week or two to start getting results back from these different cities that I'm going to be working with. So I'm hoping I have enough information by the 16th to be able to give you some better information, so.
All right. Any other questions, council, for Jim Carter, please, sir? Jim, thank you for your time tonight and helping us educate this and all of your hard work you've put in to solving this issue that we face.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Next in our new business is the Tell City Electric Department budget. We actually won't take official action and adopt it tonight, but we will at our December 4th meeting, I think that's the date is. So council, the Tell City Electric Department's budget was distributed out last week, and I think Vern has said that again Friday. I don't know if any of you have reached out to the electric department, if you had any questions. Is it what?
December 6.
I'm sorry, December 6. I was wrong on the date. But now's the chance to ask any questions you may have regarding the Tell City electric budget. We have several other board members, as well as their employees, Andy Hicks and Paige both there in the office, who probably know, well, I won't say they know the numbers very any, but JB knows the numbers pretty well, too. So I don't want to say quite like that, but we do have, I'm here as representation for the electric department. So now's your chance to ask any questions. As we get to our December meeting, I'd like to, you know, move that along a little faster if we can. So now the floor is yours, council, for any questions. Andy, you want to come up, maybe you could do a little presentation if you want to, while they're thinking about questions?
Afternoon, Mayor, council. As stated, we actually adopted this budget about two weeks ago tomorrow, just shot two weeks, submitted it, 17.4 million, literally 17.4 million. As you see, it will take a net loss this coming year. If I had a rate increase, I think between last year's budget and this year's budget, about a million dollars. Paige is my numbers person, so she can vouch for that a little better than I can. Just wanted to let you know that going forward for the month, any questions at all, feel free to reach out to myself or Paige, or swing by the office, we'd be glad to answer any questions to make this smooth process. You will find in there, we have a rate study proposed for this upcoming budget. That was a request of the city council back in, I think, 2019. I have it every three years. So 2022 will be the third year, so we're due for a rate study. As well, you'll see a budget line in there, item for $750,000. That is the engineering study for a new substation. Our Ecliss substation's about 65, 70 years old, so we're due to upgrade that. So that'll be a down payment for the engineering development of a substation, and a down payment for the transformer that will go inside that substation. But any questions at all, feel free to reach out, and we can answer everything for you.
Phillip, do you have any questions? You're muted on your phone, Phillip, sorry.
Sorry. Did you say you're going to take a net loss for this next year?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we will.
I'm sure you're facing a lot of pressures on your wages down there, aren't you, with, because I know wages across the country are going up.
We are. Our lineman and our office staff are still underpaid according to the APPA study that we go off of. We will try to, we have no anticipated raise, raises in this year just because of the budget itself, with the impact of IMPA's increase.
Thank you. I'll, I'll reach out to Paige if I have questions.
When, when are you looking for that rate increase? I mean, the rate study?
Yeah, don't say that word yet.
Um, we, we put out a couple of fillers. Prime, the Prime Group is a company we're looking at going with, a company we've been using in the past. I think they were booked through the year. The Prime Group has done over a hundred and fifty utilities to actually, the group we used to use, strongly recommended them. We're shooting for February or March for them to come in and do the rate study. And that's something I think we're looking at implementing. If, if there was a rate increase, it'd be implemented in the following year's budgets.
Andy, you said EMA's raised the, our rates of million increase?
The total, the total cost is about a million dollar increase.
Is that for next year?
That's this coming year, twenty twenty-two.
What, what are the factors they're using to determine that?
They're, they're looking at our load to go up across the board. So one thing that's, is tough for us to, to budget for is, EMA basically gives us kilowatt hours and a kilowatt on demand. And they say, you're going to increase, and you're going to use as much more utilities this year. And they also had a rate increase. The problem with that and budgeting, they don't tell us where and what sector, what rate class we're going to see those increases. So we have some, some rate classes that does better than the others as far as income. Depending on where those rates fall, where the increase, where we see them, would dictate the budget. But going over the numbers with Paige, we feel like what we did is best suited for a budget. And if you want to, Paige, you can go up here and she can explain that for how we did a roll-in twelve months average. Do you come up with the numbers?
I was under the opinion that a major reason in not discounting environmental factors that EMA was building the solar parks all around the state was possibly to reduce costs of electricity. Has the solar parks had any effect upon reducing EMA's cost of production?
They have, we just came from a meeting, I believe, they're, they're about fifteen percent. Their goal is to get up to about fifty percent in future years. But they're, I mean, the coal, the coal industry's taking a major hit right now with legislation in Washington. So they're looking at increased costs there, and, and they're looking ultimately, long-term, is phasing those out. So they're, they're already making plans for the future to get costs down as much as possible, but they're taking, they're taking hits from legislation as well.
Council, any other questions for Andy or anybody at Tel City Electric?
You said that usage, a million dollars more next year, but you're saying that you're looking at that much more of usage, not rates have to go up, and usage is going to be used, and that's what you're projecting?
That, that, that's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. And that seven hundred fifty thousand for that substation, do you guys have that in some of your other capital money there, or?
Yes, yes, that, that, that budget will be coming from our, our accounts we have set aside.
Okay, okay.
And it's important to point out that, you know, obviously that substation's age is one factor, but also the parts to get for, they have to have them prefab, manufactured here locally and wherever. You can't find the parts, and it's like having an old car, it's harder to find parts for an old car.
But lead times on them are.
It's dependable, but when the parts break, it's harder to find them, and it's expensive.
That's correct.
Because they have to be customated. So I think, I applaud Tel City Electric in looking forward and finding, you know, the solutions for this issue that's only going to get worse as time goes on. And so I, I appreciate that and their efforts. Any other questions? Thank you, electric board and Paige and Andy for your time tonight, we greatly appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Next item under new business is boards and committees appointments. You should have gotten an email, Vern, you sent it out today, right? Or you, okay, you should have gotten an email. We're not taking any actions tonight, I'm just getting ahead of this. So at our next meeting, we can actually start making some appointments to terms that expire January first of twenty twenty-two. You'll see highlighted in the green are mayoral appointments, and highlighted in the red is council appointments. As far as, and I'm just going to read over some of these here, and I'll have Vern to put a list together. We'll put it for the newspaper, we'll send, if they want to put it in there. We'll try to post it on our Facebook. And any inquiries or interest in serving any of these committees or boards, they can send their interest to the mayor's office, and I make sure I get it to Gary as council president. So maybe at our December meeting, we can go ahead and start making those appointments.
Mayor, I, it would be helpful to me, I don't know if any other council members have this situation, but it would be helpful to me if I got stuff printed instead of electronically. It, it just.
It's whatever you want, just let us know, and Vern can print you out a copy and have it in your mailbox in Connie's office.
Okay, I'd appreciate that.
Just let her know and say, say, can you print this out, and she'll run it right over.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you could do one on the electric department budget also, please. I mean, it's just, anyway.
Yeah.
I, I don't like this last minute stuff, I'm sorry.
I'm going to second that.
Well, there's no, there's no action on this tonight, this is just information, so.
I'm with you, I'm kind of old school, there's something different about being able to look at the paper, anyway.
Okay.
Yes.
If you want it on paper, that's fine, it's, you just let us know, and we'll, we'll make it happen. It's easy, it's just a copy, so it's not going to hurt anything. Just trying to cut back on cost with printing and stuff, because it's, it costs us ten cents a page in color. I'm just telling you that right now, plus the paper. I know I'm saving money, but I'm always looking to save them ten cents.
Well.
I'm the chief one, I'm sorry.
But it costs us money also.
Well, you don't have to, you can look at electronically.
We want to make notes on it.
Yeah, you can print it out, it's whatever you want, I understand.
And I can print it out, but I need it before, whenever it came to.
Well, this is, this is just for discussion, I mean, there's, like I said, there's no action. So we, we can take it off the agenda if you don't, and nobody wants to talk about it, but I'm just trying to get it out here for everyone. So anyways, the alcohol beverage commission, these are mayoral ones, I'll just kind of point them out unless I say otherwise, will be a one-year term. Beautification committee, they're all up. Board of Works, cemetery committee. Council president, which would be one that the council would choose. Floodwall committee, local emergency plan committee, parks and rec has one, which is a mayoral council. Perry County Convention Visitors Bureau. Now to council, we have the Perry County Development Corporation, that's a council appointment. Perry County Recycling Management District, that's a council and a mayoral. The personnel advisory committee, that's a mayoral, and whoever's council president. Plan commission, we do have one that's council, we have one mayoral, and we even have one vacancy. So there'll be three on that one, which, that's mayoral as well. Pool committee, everybody's on that, the plan commission, which we actually will have an opening on that for sure.
Everybody's on the pool committee?
Yeah. They're one-year terms, so they're all up.
Oh, I, okay. I thought you meant everyone on the council is on the pool committee.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
That's what I thought, Julie, that's what I thought.
I said, I might.
I was looking here, I can't.
Good job, guys.
Council, if you want to copy this, I'll have Vern, I'll tell you what, I'll have Vern print everybody out a copy. It'd be in your mailbox, pick it up at your convenience. And then we'll go ahead and put these out there. Some people may want to still serve on the same committee or board they're on, but I still think it's fair that we reach out to any residents that are interested in serving on those committees as well. So you have who you want to pick and choose from then.
But we're going to, we're voting on this next meeting?
In December.
The one, okay.
Yeah, there'll be no action tonight, absolutely none.
I can copy mine, I just didn't, wouldn't have it for tonight.
Did you get my email?
Yes, the plan, or the region fifteen, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, but I just wanted to get this out there so we can get ahead of it. We can even wait for January if you want, but you never know what's going to come down the pipeline. I'm just trying to get ahead of a few things, so.
A few of the positions we need, will need to know before January, like the council president and that, so that we can have it correct for the payroll.
Sure.
In January.
That's correct. That's all I have on the boards and committees reports, if nobody has anything else. All right, that's all we have in our new business, we'll move on to mayoral report. I just got a few things, sir, I want to touch base on, I touched on them in the board of works, but I want to touch on them in the council as well. We are in the process of conducting the ARPA or ARP, or whatever you want to call it, survey. This is how to spend those funds. So, you know, earlier we talked about how we feel we'd like to see some that use for parks. Fill out the survey, we'll see if we can or can't do. There are certain things you can and